Okay, it's 5:30. Let's call the workshop session to order. First item should have been a discussion from Paul Wilbon on WCID. We will reschedule him hopefully for the next session. Item number three, discussion and presentation from Mark Storm, Hill Country 100 Club.
Thank you. I was hoping to have somebody do this first so I'd know what to do. But council, thank you for having me today. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. So my name is Mark Storm. I'm a citizen here in Lampasas. And I come to you not as a citizen, but also, but not just as a citizen, but also as representing the Board of Directors for the Hill Country 100 Club. You know, what we do is we work with, we work with our first responders in our communities that we serve. The four counties that we serve are Blanco, Lano, Burnett, and Lampasas Counties. So heroes are ordinary people who do extraordinary things because it's the right thing. They have families, children, and live and work and participate in all facets of life in our communities. These are the men and women who are the first responders who are trained to answer the call when emergencies arise. They understand that their lives are often in danger, but they have committed to those lives to serve and to protect others. We honor them because they are deserving honor. They risk their lives every day to uphold their promises that they have made to keep our communities a safe place to work, to live, and to raise our families. The Hill Country 100 Club is an organization comprised of concerned citizens and local businesses who understand the sacrifice that is the daily walk that these individuals who have chosen to uphold the laws of our great nation to willingly be the first to provide medical services and assistance. As an all-volunteer organization, the Hill Country 100 Club's mission statement is caring for those who serve and protect us and our loved ones. They accomplish this by supporting first responders' families and bringing hope when the unthinkable happens and someone is injured or killed in the line of duty. This is done through several programs designed to support the families of the families left behind, especially when loss creates an untimely financial burden. The goal is to be there at their point of need within 48 hours of any incident. The Hill Country 100 Club is supported wholly through the generosity of the communities that they serve by the individuals and businesses who understand the need to come alongside these families in crisis. So my, the point of me being here today is to ask the city of Lampasas to be a contributor to the Hill Country 100 Club. We, we often, the interaction that you may have seen the Hill Country 100 Club before in the past has been perhaps at the recognition banquets where we've, we've honored several of our local law enforcement officers and first responders for their service and their meritorious actions. Hopefully, we never have to serve that, to fill that need of coming through in the event of, of an untimely death in the line of duty. But that's what we're here for. And so what I want to ask for the, from the city of Lampasas is that we, as a city, give to the Hill Country 100 Club $3,000 to help support that, to help support that organization and their efforts. That is all I've prepared.
Hey, Mark, can you talk about scholarships also that the Hill Country 100 Club gives to high school students going into law enforcement? And also firefighting, any first responders?
Yeah, so you've summed it up pretty well right there. We, we do give the scholarships to individuals. I believe there were, I don't remember how many we did this last year. I think it was nine or 10 that we did. But it's just in our communities that we serve, so the four counties that are covered by the Hill Country 100 Club. We give out scholarships to, to those who are going into criminal justice or into the emergency services.
And that stays here? The scholarship stays here in our county?
In the four counties that we serve.
Oh, the four counties.
Well, the scholarship.
Let me, if I may, do you have any other funding sources other than by donation?
No, this is, there's, well, it's all, it's all by donation. We have some various programs that we do. Sometimes we, we gather support for our awards banquet.
Fundraising and?
Fundraising through that. We have a fundraising golf tournament coming up. So thanks for bringing that. Anybody that plays golf is welcome to join us for that. But also through our memberships from businesses and individuals in our communities, but also through donations in the community, from, from around the communities.
Finally, do we have any idea, Mark, what other cities have done within this coverage area?
My understanding is that several cities contribute on that level or slightly under, but on or, on or about that level is my understanding.
And we have contributed in the past, just not last year, I think. Do you have a record?
I can confirm that.
Burnett gave 2,500 this last year, and I didn't want Lampasas to be beat by Burnett.
I'm pretty sure we could beat Burnett.
Well, you know, they do have a bigger tax base than we do.
I do know that.
So you're asking for three, and it, any other information, any other questions? Thank you, Mark. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, discussion and a progress update from NextLink.
Wonderful. Okay. Can everybody hear me okay? Never know where to stand with these things. Thanks for having me. My name's Chris Huffman. I'm an operations manager with NextLink Internet. This is the first opportunity that I've had to speak to the city council directly. I just wanted to say thank you guys for having me out here. Really, just look forward to any opportunity to give an update or give any sort of information out there that we can.
Chris, could you maybe get closer to the microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Is that any better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Much better.
Didn't want to overload y'all. Okay, so can everybody hear me now? All right. Just to start over, my name's Chris Huffman. I'm an operations manager with NextLink Internet. The purpose of today's slide deck is just to give the city council kind of an update, a status of this project, where we're at, where we're headed. So for, for anybody that I haven't had the pleasure of speaking with before, my name's Chris Huffman, operations manager with NextLink. What we want to do, and for, for those that aren't familiar with this project, we've committed to building out fiber to the home for all of the city of Lampasas. So for all of the city limits, we'll be, we'll be building a state-of-the-art fiber optic network that's, allows any, any person within, within the city limits to connect to the service and gets access to that high-speed internet. So a little bit about what I'm going to be talking about today. Want to go over the agenda just real quick. So for anybody that hasn't heard of NextLink, you know, you've maybe seen our trucks around. You maybe see us up and down the streets installing internet sometimes. Wanted to give a brief background on, on who NextLink is, why NextLink. We'll be following that with some of the numbers. I put together this slide deck and in doing so, found some pretty cool numbers. So I wanted to share those with y'all as well. I'll follow that up with just a status, an as-built. It'll just show where, what neighborhoods we've built to, where we currently have coverage. And then I'll follow that with a timeline. It'll show all the subsequent neighborhoods and a forecast date and a completion date for, for the entire city. One of the major talking points that we've been focusing on is downtown. So we'll go over a lot of the details for the downtown and the CBD. And then we'll follow that up with, after completing downtown, which neighborhoods we'll focus on next. And then after that, that's really all I've got. It'll open up some opportunities for questions. But also just wanted to say, guys, at any point, if you have any questions, don't hesitate. I'm hoping this isn't a, just me on my soapbox. I wanted, wanted to give you the opportunity at any point to ask questions and we can work through them. All right, so who's NextLink? NextLink was founded in 2012 by a name, by a man named Danny Gilbert. The company's based out of Weatherford, Texas, you know, just west of the DFW Metroplex. Danny, he started this company and prior to NextLink, he actually owned a ISP that he sold to another competitor. Went to work for that competitor and quickly found out that that competitor wasn't running the company up to his standards. So he lived out his non-compete contract and then soon as that was expired, started NextLink. Unfortunately, Danny passed away. He got sick. One of the major shareholders in NextLink was, or is a man by the name of Bill Baker. He's our current CEO and owner. Included a little quote in here that I thought really wraps NextLink up into a single sentence. That quote says, "Since we began, we've been refining our business model while not losing sight of what's really important to us, company culture and customer service." That's, that's us in a nutshell. So currently, we've, have operations in six states, just past 70,000 subscribers. Just crossed the 700-employee mark, and we are on just over 1,200 towers. It's a, it's a big network and it's vastly growing every day. So up until 2018, there was just a lot of organic growth. We didn't acquire any companies. Everything was just kind of the boots-on-the-ground, the go-get-it attitude. All of the operations were within Texas. In 2018, there was a grant called CAF, which stands for the Connect America Fund. The goal of that, of that grant was to provide broadband service to areas with basically little to no options for service. We bid really aggressively in that, in that grant. We were awarded 281 million over the course of 10 years. That grant has allowed us to expand very rapidly into areas like Lampasas County, areas in the central Texas area with basically little to no service. To date, we've been in Lampasas for about a year. We've got about a little over 20 towers active. And so we're continuing to fulfill that CAF grant coverage. But also, the focus of today's presentation is the opportunity that CAF offered us to start this fiber-to-the-home project in Lampasas. So what makes us different? Company culture. It's, it's the small-business mentality. It's that, you know, that go-getter attitude of no matter how big you get, you're still nimble and you're still able to go solve problems quickly. I think that's one of the best things about this company that people love. And then also, that, that last bullet point, every employee and every customer matters. Without our, without our customers, we are absolutely nothing. All right, enough about NextLink. Let's get to the, to the good numbers. Okay, so when I was putting this together, came across some cool data. So to date, we've touched 590 poles owned and operated, or owned by the city of Lampasas. We've built just under 16 miles of outside plant. We have 405 houses or businesses that are available for service. Out of this Lampasas office, 23 employees call it their home, and seven of those are fully dedicated to the fiber team, to, to building out the, the plant, the network within City of Lampasas. So this neighborhood map, it was actually provided by the, by the city. I know the city's done a lot of research and partnered with some firms to put together a lot of really great data. I wanted to show this map just so that everybody's familiar and has a good understanding of what each neighborhood looks like, how it's categorized, how it's named, and so that on the subsequent slides, you can see just exactly where we're talking about. Hopefully, if, if there is a question, you can always refer back to that map. Okay, so talking about as-built neighborhoods. These areas outlined in these colorful polygons, this is just a Google Earth snippet that I took. These are to date the neighborhoods that we currently have coverage in. So our fiber optic upstream connection, it terminates over at the, the water tower over on Nix Road. So logically, one of the best spots to start this build-out was on the far west side. So that's what we did. The first neighborhood that we built out was Fawn Acres. It's outlined in the blue polygon on your map. You'll see this figure HHP. We, we look at that one a lot. What it stands for is households passed. It's a good, a good index for us to kind of just show how big the neighborhood is and how many people and how many customers that we can serve. So in Fawn Acres, there were 31 households passed. The next neighborhood we built was Horseshoe Bend, 42 total in there. Then the next neighborhood that we built out and serve is Stone Valley. Stone Valley has a lot of houses in that new development. Part of Stone Valley covers not just the, the new development, but also a lot of houses along Nix Road. So 121 households passed. One of the things that we really wanted to do was be really receptive to what the city was telling us. And that was overall, that there was a giant need for great service for the CBD and the downtown area. Logically, one of the things that we could have done is just continue our build on the west side. But we wanted to jump straight downtown and really meet the, the needs of the people and those small businesses and, and big businesses alike. So we skipped the down, or skipped the west Lampasas neighborhoods, jumped straight to downtown. These areas, these polygons, up and down Key Avenue, they were just lit up with service not too long ago. So the purple polygon on there is identified on our side as the West Key Avenue. 101 serviceable addresses on, on West Key Avenue. The next one is Aqua, which is the East Key Avenue. And there are roughly 110 serviceable addresses on there. So that gets us where we are today. The next slide, wanted to show this, there's a ton of information on this slide, but it gives a really good, really good representation of where we are and where we're going. The neighborhoods, on the far-left column, you can see the neighborhoods. Shows us a projected start date, a projected completion date. It shows construction days as well. One of the key figures that we like to always look at are the, the neighborhood miles. It shows us an accurate representation of just how big this, this network is getting and just how many, how much manpower and, and, you know, materials and labor it takes to, to make this thing happen. The next column is total miles built. As we complete a neighborhood, that'll subsequently be rolled in, and it's a good, good tracker for us. We've got households passed as well as total households passed identified. And then we also have that far column that represents a percentage of total completion. So as, as we finish up a neighborhood, you get to see a, a good little tracker of, of just where we are and where we're going. Any questions on, on this one? I know that's a lot of, a lot of data on that one. All right, so I wanted to talk about downtown just a little bit. You know, like I said earlier, we wanted to be really receptive to the needs. We want to see growth in Lampasas. We want to see Lampasas succeed. And one of the ways that we're trying to do that is to serve all of the downtown area as quickly as possible. Wanted to present some info and just give you guys an update of where we are in the downtown area. We have a constructed, or construction was completed on the 6th of August. So we finished up the, as far as what it's taken to get the network constructed. At this point, we are working on splicing and testing and ensuring that everything is up to par and we can offer service as soon as possible. As we work through this, we're, we're trying to release the entire downtown area by the 13th of September. So we're on track. We're still testing. But there's an additional 347 homes and businesses that will be available, hopefully by the middle of September. Any questions on this slide? All right, so once we finish the downtown area, we're going to jump back to the west and try to get just a lot of the concentration of Lampasas. One of the things that we really recognized was areas that were densely populated. You know, this is a big build for us. It's quite an investment on our part. One of the things that we wanted to do was identify those areas with, that are the most densely populated that we could serve the highest number of customers quickly. We decided to go back to West Lampasas after we finished downtown. So the first neighborhood will be Lampasas Spring. 385 households passed by, in that neighborhood. It's identified in the green polygon. The next one will be North Lampasas Spring. It's outlined in the orange polygon, a total of 317 households passed in that one. The last one in pink is West Lampasas, and there's 572 that we've identified in that polygon. Total for all of this West Lampasas area, 1,274. And once we finish it, it'll be a total of 68% complete with the build. So we're hoping to have West Lampasas started by the, somewhere in December. And I think there's a completion date. If we go back to, I think it's a, sometime in April, that we're looking to finish West Lampasas. Guys, that's really, that's really all I had. Just really wanted to give you guys a, a status update, where we are. One of the things that we really want to encourage is just some feedback. We, we want to be really receptive. We want to hear from, from people, not only the council, but also the, any citizens out there. If we've missed the mark, if there are opportunities where we need to get better, if there are areas that, you know, for, for advertising or, or marketing that we need to capitalize on, we really want to hear that. We want to, we want to address that.
Chris, I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I want to thank you for a good presentation, very informative. And these are going to be very elementary because I, my age group, we didn't grow up with this.
Sure.
So I'm learning. Is, is this the same thing, NextLink, is it the same thing as high-speed internet?
So the baseline for high-speed internet is, at one point, it was 25 megabits per second. And, you know, a, a lot of people don't really know what that means. One way I like to describe it is nowadays, everybody's watching, you know, streaming video, right? Netflix or whichever flavor. For, for me at my house, it's Disney Plus because I've got two littles, so. But to stream a video on, through your broadband connection, you need roughly three to five megabits per second. Doesn't sound like a lot, and it's truly not. It's, it's all about the quality of the connection. But it, to answer your question, absolutely, in a sense, it's broadband. The speeds that we offer are gigabit, which is, equals to 1,000 megabits per second. So really, you can do anything, and anything that you want to do on the internet, you can do through this connection.
So I'm, I'm thinking of a business coming into Lampasas. Would it be fair to say that we, through NextLink, that we have internet capabilities of being able to serve just about any business that could come here?
Absolutely. That's a, that's a great assumption. The network that we're building rivals anything that is built in a major metropolitan area. It's also built with future expansion in mind. So while today's standards might be gigabit or 1,000 megabit, the network that we're building is 10 gig capable. So it's capable of speeds 10, 10 times faster than what we offer right now.
What, what are the big, tall, is that, is that NextLink's, the big, tall antennas on people's houses? Is that part of your network?
Yes, sir. Sometimes it is. A, a lot of our network right now is, is the wireless line-of-sight solution.
Okay.
We've, most of our equipment that's on the towers locally requires pretty good line-of-sight, meaning it doesn't just plow through tree after tree after tree. So in order to get a, a good signal back to the tower and get, you know, good broadband service to, to the people, sometimes the only option is to go up.
Okay. And I guess one more question I have, and I'll leave you alone. What's the difference between Suddenlink and NextLink?
So Suddenlink is a, a traditional cable provider.
Okay.
The networks that I've seen, and, and a lot of this, it just depends on, on population. If they built a network and, and, you know, I don't know when they built it, but a lot of times they'll, they'll build it, they'll oversell it, and then they won't upgrade the network to meet the, the demands of today's, you know, technology needs. So the difference that I can tell you is that the network that we're building, like I said, is, is capable of the fastest technology that's out there today and tomorrow. So we are local, you know, we, we do provide, you know, in my opinion, great customer service. We're not perfect, but we are passionate. We, you know, we're for our customers and we realize that we're nothing without them. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris, lots of people are saying they know that you're out on 580 East, but they don't know how to get in touch with you to get service to their home. Do you have some, some websites, some, somewhere they can go look to, to get in touch with the person they need to? Couple of my friends have stopped at the office there and were told that they can't do anything for them, so.
Sure. So one of the areas that I think we really need to get better about is projected coverage for towers that haven't gone active yet. Any opportunity where somebody walks into the office, and it's almost weekly now, 580 East going that way, I try to pull up a coverage map and really give them a, a much better idea of, if this tower goes live, yes, we can or we cannot service you. That way, they have real expectations. We're still working through that. Part of the problem is just getting that information out there to sales agents. We, we do a really good job of, of, once a tower is live, really giving good, accurate information to our sales agents so that they can sign customers up. But until the tower is actually live and serviceable, it's, it's definitely one of the areas that we can improve on. But to answer your question, I'm happy to give out my business card, my cellphone number. If any of your friends or anybody within the city has any question about, you know, towers that we haven't built out yet, I'd be happy to see if we can get them service and give them a projected time when that tower will go live.
Okay.
Does the city have a, have a lease for the poles that they use as it? Okay.
I have one question in regards to our business part. We're, that's on the agenda tonight. We're, we've been talking about trying to bring in utilities, so we're ways away from that thing being ready for any kind of business. But if we needed a commitment for a future business coming in through Mandy's office, is that something that y'all can work with her on?
Hundred percent.
And change schedules around if you have to?
Absolutely. Yeah, one of the, the benefits in the way we've built this team is we have, our fiber team, it's seven total people, but we have two separate crews. We have two bucket trucks and we split them out. So like we were talking about in the EDC meeting on, on Wednesday, it's one of the benefits that we can push a crew one way, push a crew another way, so that if there are needs that meet- so that if there are needs that need, need to be met quickly, we can do that, absolutely.
Okay, well, this would be a planning activity for us, if it was a matter of someone committing to coming here and needed, needed the commitment.
Yeah, give us a, a little bit of a heads up and we'll get it on our, our build schedule.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or concerns?
I have a few questions. So, like, the technology is just line-of-sight from the house to a tower, is that right?
Currently, yes.
And, so, with the different neighborhoods that you went through in your presentation, is that saying that these neighborhoods will not have access to that line-of-sight until these completion dates?
So, any, any neighborhood that hasn't been built out with fiber does have the opportunity for line-of-sight service. Line-of-sight depends on exactly that line-of-sight. So, we can project, we've partnered with Google, we use a software called Google Network Planner. It has foliage and, and density coverage overlaid onto our coverage map. So, it does a really good job of identifying the, you know, fifty-foot pecan tree outside and what it's gonna do for a signal, you know, for a house that's right behind it. We try to be as accurate as possible, but a lot of times, you really don't know until you get out there and, and try to connect the, the houses. One of the other things that we've done is, we spent a, a lot of money on a spectrum called CBRS, Citizens Broadband Radio Spectrum. That, that spectrum operates in a little bit lower frequency, in three-point-five gigahertz. What that means is it, it cuts through the trees a little bit better than the current equipment that we use. We've, we've started to deploy some of that equipment, we have it here in Lampasses. It does a little bit better job of that, but it's not magic. It, it, basically, it's another tool in the toolbox, helps us to connect customers that, you know, we wouldn't have been able to with the traditional line-of-sight equipment.
So, if someone has line-of-sight right now, like I, I think we do at our house, when we have fiber available over there, will that be a pretty easy switch?
Yes, and if you are under contract, contractor will just transfer straight over to fiber. So, yes, easy transition, and a lot of times, we try to stay on, ahead of that. So, even if the customer, the homeowner isn't aware that fiber is available, we'll identify the current customers and send mailers out and contact them.
And then, one thing I, I noticed here too, is with, I didn't see any projection dates for like northeast Lampasses. When do you think that might happen?
Let me, let me see northeast Lampasses. So, unfortunately, northeast Lampasses is at the far end of the build. I'm right there with you, now, our office is on 580 East and we're on the line-of-sight equipment too. So, there's a, a lot of houses in northeast Lampasses, but unfortunately, it's, it's at the very far end of the build. But it has a, it's at the very bottom, projected start date of July of, of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Chris? Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Item five is discussion and updates related to COVID-19 pandemic, Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The numbers that I have come from Department of State Health, State Health Services this evening. Active cases across the state, two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine. Number just keeps going up. Hospitalizations for trauma area L, which is what we are in, we've got nineteen COVID patients in our trauma area. That's a very good sign from what we have had across the state, we're at thirteen thousand, however. But that thirteen thousand actually does represent a drop of about half a percent from what we were last time that we've talked, that percentage has actually gone down, even though we've gone up in the number of cases. Lampasses County, two-hundred-and-fifteen active cases, new cases that were reported last Friday for a week, we added twenty new cases. So, from week to week, we added twenty new cases. Confirmed active cases in the last thirty days, three-hundred-and-thirty for Lampasses County. Three-hundred-and-thirty for Lampasses County. Last week, we talked about the percentage of vaccinations, we're gonna talk about actual numbers this week. In this zip code again, it's been a while since I brought you that information. Five thousand and nineteen have actually had one shot and completely vaccinated, it's gonna be four thousand one hundred and five. Last thing I'd like to mention to you this evening, on September first, we will be doing a shot clinic at the fire station. This is not put on by the city, this is not put on by the fire department. This would be the state guard is doing that, they're handling all the stuff. They just said, hey, we need a, a room, and we need some tables, and we need some chairs. And we definitely have room, tables, and chairs anytime anybody needs something, not even just for the COVID vaccinations, but anything else, so.
I believe I read that there is no appointment necessary?
They would like for you to make an appointment if you could, however, if you're not able to make an appointment, they do advise that you just stop by. I would encourage you though, anytime, to call any of the pharmacies here in town. I was speaking earlier today, whether it's one of the big pharmacies or a small pharmacy, if you go into Cove, if you go into Burnet, if you go into wherever, and you got there early and you've got thirty minutes, stop and check at a local pharmacy, or a CVS, or Walgreens, or Walmart, or anything like that, and say, hey, I wasn't planning on this, but you got time to squeeze me in, and I think they would more than accommodate you.
Good, and still no cost?
They, if you have insurance, they would like your insurance information. They will bill your insurance, but there should be no out-of-pocket cost on that.
With that shot clinic, what time is that gonna be on the first?
I'm sorry, I don't know exactly when it starts, it, it starts in the morning, and I'm gonna say nine o'clock, to be safe. I know that on our, on the website.
Nine to four, I believe.
Yeah, on, on the website, I believe that it is listed, all the, all the information that's relevant to that clinic is there.
What?
And that includes the link to set up an appointment on there?
Yes.
What vaccine will you guys be giving at the fire station, do you know?
I believe that that one is going to be Pfizer.
Okay.
And right now, Pfizer did receive their full.
FDA.
Full.
FDA.
Stamp of approval and everything like that today. Hopefully, that will change some people's minds about whether or not this is something they wanna do.
And when you say the website, what website are you talking about?
City of Lampasses.
Just wanted to make sure for anyone watching.
Yeah, City of Lampasses. Are there any other questions on this?
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Item six, discussion regarding fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget modifications.
Just before we go too far, Monica, you vetted all that on the COVID. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really only have a few slides for you this evening to kind of recap the discussion from the last, our last meeting last Monday night. We have a few tasks yet to do, but I, I, I'm hopeful that this presentation represents one of the final steps in our budgeting process. Just, and then also, before I forget it, I did speak with Chief Bailey earlier, and based on Council's wishes, we are able to accommodate the request from Hill Country One Hundred, if you did wanna go up to that amount. But those funds are available, we actually have already budgeted some of those, if not a, a majority of them. So, if you'll, as we go, as we conclude, if you'll just shake your head up, up, back and forth, yes, and we'll, you'll give us direction to do that. You've got included in, in, at your dais, not only the slides, but also the city roll-up by major account, as well as the six operating funds, and then also, I'd taken it down to the departmental. One of the questions that I'll have for you towards the end of the presentation will be, to what extent would you like backup materials? We started doing this about three or four years ago, where we started asking you, because we found a lot of these budget books underneath the dais that were several years old. So, we wanna make sure, if you, if you want some more information, we'll be glad to give it to you, but we don't wanna overload you at the same time. In terms of our status, the budget has been updated to reflect Council direction from August sixteenth. We had a fairly lengthy list of items that, and modifications, as well as received your input on a number of items. The budget does include two full-time equivalent positions. Start dates to be determined, although we were going to move fairly quickly on a line worker position. The other two, we're going to kind of take a look at duties and how we might restructure those, and then bring, bring one or both of them on, maybe after the first quarter of the fiscal year. We just wanted to let you know as well, is that we certainly believe that this is a relatively conservative budget in terms of expenditures. As we did all of the inputs based on last meeting, there, we do have about ten thousand dollars tucked away in contingency, which is not a whole lot on a thirty-one million dollar budget, but in the event that did, something did come up, Hill Country One Hundred, for example, there, there would be some, some, some funds available for something like that. One thing that we did have to do, this is exactly what we did for, excuse me, West Avenue E last year, but the unspent, but budgeted expense for paving, we moved to FY twenty-two to complete East Third. I think I sent you an update on project status, and we got held up basically from Western to Live Oak to try to redo some of that. We went ahead and told, told the engineer to go ahead and move forward, he has done that, but it'll probably be first quarter of FY twenty-two before that project. So, that is one modification that we did, did make outside of our discussion. One thing I do wanna give some attention to, or, and, and some, just to make sure that Council understands what, what staff heard at the last meeting, is that the Public Works Director position is, of course, that is still on our books, but it's not budgeted. But we wanna review that after the hiring of the ACM. And that, we're confident, based in part to conservative budgeting, that the position could be funded mid, mid-year if needed. So, we don't want to dismiss your comments to us, we wanna make sure that we still keep an eye on that, and as, as our staff gets to put together from an ACM position, that we'll review that and then come back to Council to deliberate with you on that.
Finley, if I, if I may interrupt, just one thing. I would certainly like for the Council and, and you to try to reconsider, at least keep in mind to try to fund that position. It does more than oversees those three departments. It's, it's highly involved in planning and customer service, and, and does a lot of outside work with engineers, architects, so on and so forth. As far as coordinating activities, I sent a memo last week to y'all, and, and I did not include the Council, but I would ask that we try to consider it.
I'd be hap, we'd, you know, I think one of the last things that I have on my slide is that we're very open to whatever direction and input Council provides us, so.
I just feel like the Assistant City Manager, there's more there than what he can, he or she can afford to give to Public Works Department and those particular areas of work.
Finley, isn't that what that says?
I'm uncomfortable enough, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor, do you mind?
Sure, go ahead.
Isn't that what you're saying, though, is that basically, if we feel like we need a Public Works Director next year, that's something we can look at?
Absolutely.
So, you already took that into account?
Correct.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the way you've got it, Finley, if everyone.
I'm not. So, I'm just, I'm just stating that, that I'm not.
Right, and we heard you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Randy, what is your timeline?
Timeline?
Yeah.
I would, I would still stick with funding the position. Not with an Assistant City Manager as, as a fill-in for that, but to keep that position. Just like we had, he's actually not funding a staff member that he's had.
Maybe we're misunderstanding, Finley. You are going to focus on the ACM initially and then get the Public Works Director as you see fit later in the budget year. That's my understanding.
Okay, that's not the way I understood it. I understood that ACM would be overseeing some of those duties.
Correct, correct. So, one of the things that we did, and I believe the July seventh meeting, we talked about direct reports. And, the, the difference between a direct report to an ACM versus having a Public Works Director is, I believe, the difference in seven, six or seven direct reports to nine direct reports, which is, it gets, gets to be spread a little bit thin, although we've certainly been there before. I think the advantage that we saw with somebody with a Public Works background doing the assistant, and more the administrative, is, I don't think it's unlike the description that Councilman Clark says, that there's more to Public Works than just Public Works. We were in a somewhat unique position, because, you know, Ricky, I think, was the right person at the right time to kind of fill up both of those duties. If Council would like me to budget for that position, I'd certainly, certainly refer to you.
Wanna come back to it?
Sure, we'll come back to that. The last line, we'll also review and consider utility rates in September. We felt like trying to push that through at this time was a, a little too much, so we, we wanna come back and review that in September. Talk just a minute about tax rates, and I think you've kind of heard our, our woes about getting a accurate no-new and voter approval rate through the, through the appraisal district. And I, I do wanna acknowledge to you and to the public, the, the work that Yvonne did in terms of working these numbers, it was very frustrating, even to me. When it doesn't make sense to me, you know something's really wrong, because I, I, you know, I don't get in the weeds as much as Yvonne did, but we feel like, I believe it was last Wednesday or Thursday, we got what we felt like were accurate numbers. Again, just as a reminder, and, and the story behind this has to do with the school district funding and the increase in valuations. Our, our FY twenty-one rate was thirty-nine, thirty-nine and a half cents per hundred. Our FY twenty-two no-new rate, which is what they used to call the effective rate, which brings you the same amount of money on the same assessed property from the previous year, is thirty-two cents. The voter approval rate, the rate that, which you cannot go any higher than without a, without an election, is thirty-five point three cents. So, we feel good about these, these numbers, although what we're suggesting you consider as a proposed tax rate is gonna be about a penny less than the voter approval rate. In terms of the numbers, just a couple of very quick comments, it's too much to go into a great amount of detail, but our, our budget is basically flat compared to a budget of previous year. You've got about one-point-seven million dollars worth of capital expenditures. Salaries and benefits still make up about twenty-eight percent of your overall budget. You can see big numbers up there related to, you know, other on the revenue side, that's gonna be a lot of your utility revenue. We still have the, the four-point-four at the very top for tax revenue. That's gonna make up, you know, your property tax and your sales tax, et cetera. The transfers, both on the expense line and on the revenue side, show that, you know, we do move money around from funds in order to balance, in order to provide the, the, the basic services our citizens have, expect in terms of public safety and parks and libraries, et cetera. And then debt service, about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that is not inclusive of all of our debt service, but that's what's paid out of, I believe, just the water, wastewater, is that right? We have the, the other general obligation paid out of other, through, through the ad valorem and, and other funds. In terms of the fund breakdown, and again, these are separate funds, you've got about a, almost a twelve-million-dollar general fund, again, those are for your basic. Again, those are for your basic services, public safety, parks, library, street department, utility billing and collection, et cetera. Water wastewater, about a $5.3 million budget. Electric, that's your big one, about 13. And then the smaller ones down below, golf course, animal shelter, aviation. And your utilities and the other funds, aviation, animal shelter, golf course, or enterprise, general fund takes care of your basic services. The remaining work will be a public hearing tonight on the FY '21-'22 budget. We'll ask you to consider a proposed tax rate. The proposed tax rate is the highest rate that you can adopt. And then you will also be asked to consider setting a public hearing on the tax rate for September 7th at 5:30 p.m. And that you'll do later in this agenda. September 13th, which is the first regular meeting of September, you would be asked to consider the first reading of an ordinance approving the FY '21-'22 budget and tax rate. And then follow that up with September 27th, your next regular meeting for the second reading of the ordinance approving the budget and tax rate. Like I suggested, the budget, if you want more background, we can give you a book this thick with all the budget by minor account, as well as some of the staff explanation. You may just want to see it, for example, for one fund. Maybe you just want to see it for water wastewater. If that's your interest, we'll be happy to package it up in that manner. But if you want more information, please let us know and we'll be happy to get you whatever we can. We will be continuing the projects that we discussed on August 16th. Those will start coming your way in terms of status updates, go, no-go processes. So those will be coming towards you in September and probably first part of October. We'll talk about utility rates more and always we're open to council direction and input. That, like I said, I think that gets us very close to kind of a conclusion of the budget process. You still have budget work to look at in terms of passage of the ordinance and I'd be happy to discuss any other items you have.
Going back to the Public Works Director, I think we're still waiting for more than Mr. Clark's suggestion. If anyone has other ideas about that. Are we comfortable with Finley's plan to go forward with focusing on an ACM and then turning it towards the Public Works?
And Mayor, in the alternative, I would be happy to budget some money if that's council direction. We'd have to counteract it with the revenue side, but I would be happy to budget. That doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Exactly.
But at least the funds would be there and perhaps for a three-quarter of a year position or a half year, something like that, if that would be something council would want to consider.
I think that would be a prudent thing to do, is to at least budget in there. If we don't have to spend it, we've got the money to be able to accommodate that.
I guess, Finley, my question is, is do we have any indication of what the pool of applicants might be for a city manager position and their qualifications? As I stated last time, I was not pleased myself personally with what remained. But that seemed to be the six of the best choices out of the 40-some-odd that became available.
Yeah, I think, I ate lunch with some of my peers in other cities last week and they were saying, man, we can't find a Public Works Director. We can't find a planner. We can't find this. And sometimes you have to advertise for, you advertise and you get something you weren't expecting, like a planner out of ACM. So I guess what I'm trying to say is you'll get a mixed bag. You'll get some people that have a specific discipline expertise, whether that be planning, development, engineering, Public Works. But a lot of times their Public Works background is not what I would consider a broad background in Public Works. It may be on the electric side or it may be water wastewater, but it may not necessarily be all three of the departments that we have under a Public Works. So it's a mixed bag, I guess.
As far as the ACM, kind of, are we sticking with the applicants that we have now? Is that what we're looking at, Finley?
I think that we, it's probably in our best interest at this time to broaden our range, broaden our scope a little bit.
Okay, so we'd go back and do some more interviews?
Yes, sir.
I agree with that.
Yep, I do, too. I second that.
And we had some quality individuals, but I think we're not in a position to settle or we're not in a position to, we need to find somebody, I think, with a little more broad background.
Amen, yep.
Okay, everyone good with that?
Mayor and council, what I've heard from you is you'd like me to go ahead and budget some money for that position. It probably will not be a 12-month budget, but in understanding that if we do hire that position, it'll be probably after first quarter of the fiscal year and we'll do something like that. We'll offset that with some revenues that we may have under budgeted. But if that's accurate, then we'll move forward in that direction.
Could you bring us a total of the balance as it was? It was 200 and some. When you finish with this, you'll let us know.
Your balance that we brought you this evening is zero. We've got a zero balance budget, so we've got a balanced budget. And what we'll bring you after this is a balanced budget.
As far as my concerns, it's going to be probably after the first of the year before we get into the heavy areas that we've been talking about. So, you know, I could live with that through the winter months
Sure.
and certainly consider that after the first of the year. I just don't think, I just hate to see it go away.
Well, and as I said, it doesn't, if we get the right candidate for ACM or if we got the right, if we have the right candidate for a Public Works Director, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to spend that money, so.
Sure, I understand.
And then going to open up for ACM again?
Yes, sir.
Cool.
And we're all comfortable with all these?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Finley.
Thank you.
Next up is discussion and updates regarding the Advisory Board Annual Renewals and Vacancies. Ms. Sims?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have made some modifications to the agenda packet, the cover that I put in the packet. We do currently have 33 board terms that are expiring September 30th. Three vacancies and three of the 33 have opted not to renew their application at this time. Two of them are on my Planning and Zoning Commission and one is in the Golf Advisory Board. I have begun taking applications, so I have got quite a bit renewals. I've received 13 so far, which is really good for this time of year. Normally it's later that I actually get them. I have to go beg for them. So I'm pleased with that. And then I have two newly interested citizens that have never applied before. And then I have seven that have been left over from 2020 that were not appointed at that time because we didn't have any availability. So it is looking very promising. And we are continuing to push it out on social media as far as taking applications. So I still get them via the web or I get them hand-delivered to me other way. But I'm just keeping it open for opportunities. And one thing I did want to remind y'all, that when we did go through and we redid our governance policy, that that did give y'all the consideration that once board members have met at least a six-year term, that we can appoint somebody else to replace them if we choose to. It's not something we have to do, but we do have that consideration to keep in mind as well.
And do we have someone, it seems like there was a couple that had been there quite a while.
Yes, we do. And on the bottom, I kind of outlined, the very bottom of this chart shows you every member and when they actually started on those different boards. So we have some that have only been there for a few years and then we have some that have been there for 15. So it just kind of depends on what their expertise is, you know, what value are they adding to the board? You know, are they an active member? You know, and their absenteeism, of course, is something you want to consider. But I just wanted to let y'all know if y'all want me to do anything different or if you wanted me to continue with the path we're going down or if you have any ideas to recruit or if you have any ideas of people who might be interested, let me know and I'll reach out to them as well.
Okay, and maybe you can bring us those that have been there for an extended period of time and we can look over.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Becky.
You're very welcome.
Last item is any discussion regarding any item on the regular agenda. Do we have any? Would we like to take a break or continue on? Break, 10 minutes? We need to adjourn the workshop session? Could I get a motion?
No move.
Second. Chuck, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committed to our community and making our community the best that it can be. Thank you for those employees that have been dedicated and that continue to serve our community. Lord, our world, we are facing lots of, a lot of conflict now in our world and a lot of destruction, a lot of hate, and a lot of hate for you, Lord. We ask that you bless all and that you unite us together. Lord, please watch over our community, watch over our state and our world. Watch over our meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Let your legends to the Father, United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in this world, with every and justice for all.
Texas society, let your legends be Texas, one state, under God, one and universal.
Thank you. We do have some presentations and proclamations tonight. We have some service recommendations, or recognitions. James Allen, golf course for 25 years. Shirley Elders, Public Works, 15 years. And Sue Rowe, Police Department, 10 years. Can, James is not? We could have the others come up and have a photo op, maybe? All right, next item is 1.1, citizen comments. Any citizen who desires to address the City Council on a matter that is not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The City Council may not deliberate on the item presented under this agenda item. Is there anyone? No. 1.2, citizen comments. Any citizen who desires to address the City Council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. 1.3, public hearing to receive citizen input on items to be considered for the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Do we have any citizen comments on the budget? Next up, 2.1, discussion and possible action concerning approval of minutes of the special session budget workshop held on August 2nd, 2021. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 2.2, discussion and possible action concerning approval of minutes of the regular meeting on August 9th, 2021. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one item on the Cosin Agenda, 3.1. Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance for a specific use permit for property described as Lot 7-8, part of Lot 6, Block 66 of the Lampasses Springs Company First Edition, commonly known as 607 West First Street, Lampasses, Texas, Lampasses County, to allow for an accessory dwelling in an area zone, single-family residential 10 SF 10.
Move to approve.
The consent.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have a fire, any department this evening? Chief Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a presentation this evening for the annual report from the Lampasses Fire Department.
Great.
I'll try to make this quickly. I ran through it a couple of times and it was just under an hour, but I'll try to trim it down from that.
Next.
Like, I thought it was just Mandy. Like most of the other ones, I'm not a very creative person, so I don't have any fancy videos or any pictures or anything like that to show you this evening. I will read to you some numbers as far as facts, what we have done this past year. This is going to be from August of last year to August of this year, not any other calendar thing like that. But as far as Lampasses Fire Department, I think by now y'all have had a good idea of kind of what we do based on our recent conversations over the past few months. But to wrap up the Lampasses Fire Department, what do we do? We do about anything that we're asked to do. If it doesn't fall under somebody else's category, if it's not PD or Parks or whatever you want to say that it is, we're probably going to be the ones that are called, especially if it seems to be needing to be done in an emergent manner or anything like that. I don't think that's me. It was, I apologize. So by the numbers, this. So by the numbers, as far as the Lampasses Fire Department, total calls for service in the last year, 1,066. These are just calls within the city limits. This does not include the county calls. Of that, we had 827 that were EMS calls. We had 239 that were fire calls. Now, you're probably asking, we had 239 fires in the city of Lampasses? No, that's not accurate. A fire call is going to be basically anything that is not covered under EMS. When we go to a wreck, we're going to count that as a fire call because it's services that we perform that are related more to the fire department than to EMS. If we go on a carbon monoxide alarm, we go on a smoke detector alarm, anything like that, that's considered a fire call. So those, those 239 calls, that's going to be fire calls as far as that goes. So when we talk about some of the statistics that we look at in the fire service, we're talking about response time mainly. In other words, you call 911 and then the next thing you want to know is how long does it take to get there? Well, that's comprised of several different things. From the time that we receive a call in dispatch, to the time that they tone that call out, to the time that we get down to the apparatus to respond, and then it actually takes us to drive there. So from tone out to turn out to driving time, the, the response time, that's what gives you a response time. And these, these numbers are important because there are national standards that we always want to comply with and we certainly meet all those numbers at this time within the city. So when we're looking at an average response time, we have 4 minutes and 43 seconds. That's our average response time. Turnout time, a minute and 28 seconds. From the time that we're notified, when the tones go off, to the time that we're en route, we have a minute and 28 seconds. That's a fabulous number. I, I don't know how we're actually going to decrease our response time other than different roads to get there or something like that because a minute and 28 is a very good time. One of the side notes on this, overlapping incidents? We did have 134 times this last year of that thousand something calls, 134 times where we were actually on another call when another request for service came in. This is typically answered by me or by one of the shift captains. They'll make their way over to that incident at that time. But over 10, 12.57% of the time, we've had duplicate calls, calls on one on another like that. Talk a little bit about mutual aid response to the county. We had 390 responses by the Lampasses Fire Department to the county. This is broken down into 184 EMS responses and 206 fire responses. Average response time in the county, 16 minutes and 46 seconds. That makes that four and a half minutes sound pretty good here in the city, doesn't it? That's all based on geography, though. All right, typical day in, in the fire department. Many of y'all, if you drive by 4th Street down there, you see it first thing in the morning as you're driving to work, they're sitting out in the bay at the station. The bad thing about that is, is when you drive to work, they're sitting out at that bay, at that table in the bay. Then you come home from work about 5 o'clock that evening, 5:30, and guess what they're doing? They're sitting at that same table out there in the bay. I can assure you, they're not sitting out there in the bay all day long. Typically about 7 o'clock, everybody's going to arrive on shift and you're going to have just a quick briefing of the day. You're going to have what we call a roll call. You're going to talk about what are the things that need to be done that day, whether it be training, whether it be a special project, whether it's waxing the floors, stripping the floors, painting something, anything along that line. If there's something different than the ordinary, you're going to talk about it that time at 7 o'clock. Some guys choose to work out after that time. You get there at 6:30, 6:45, you throw your gear on, make sure everything's there, just broad stroke, talk about things real quick and either get a, a quick workout or go to work checking out the equipment. You might eat breakfast during that time, not sure. It kind of varies from shift to shift, depends on what day it is also. Typically on the weekends, hey, let's get everything checked out and go upstairs and cook breakfast. That's a much better day on a Sunday. But 8 o'clock, they're up and working. They're checking out all the equipment. They're going through everything that we have. Is anything missing? Is everything in good working condition? Does everything start? All the tools that we need, we run them every day. All the pumps that we have, we go through every day. We do all the things that we're supposed to do and we're usually done with that by about 9, 9:30, something like that. Then we'll start working on the day, go back to that roll call. Okay, what exactly were we going to do today? Do we have a specific training that involved hands-on training out back? Are we going to drive somewhere? Are we going to look at the newest building? Are we going to look at a pre-plan? Do we need to do an inspection? Anything along those lines, we try to get knocked out in the morning. If we need to go to the grocery store, that's a good time to do it. Usually that winds down somewhere by 11:30, 12 o'clock. Try to eat lunch, fix lunch. And then at 1 o'clock, you're back at it again. Climate, is it winter time, is it summertime? Hot days, cold days, they all impact on what's going on. If it's, if it's hot or if it's cold, we try to do a little bit more reading, a little bit more online class. Go to YouTube. I know that was one of the big things when I first got here. We had it filtered down and I had to have a talk with the IT and go, hey, we used YouTube. And they're kind of like, yeah, we've kind of used YouTube for a while and I'm not sure. And I'm like, no, we're going to use YouTube. There's a lot of great training on the internet from different fire departments around the nation on YouTube. And it's anything from videos of fires that people have gone to and you've got audio, whether you're sitting in a, a command vehicle or whether you're the first new engine. There's lots of departments across the nation that they break it down like that and you can do a great amount of training like that. So we, we try to incorporate that down there. We're very much into that. Then we also do online training, whether it be fire or EMS as far as making sure that we get the mandatory hours that we need each year. So afternoon training i- is a big part of that. Usually by 4 o'clock, that's kind of rolling down again. There may be a few things that, that hold over a little bit, but they try to start with the evening meal, one person to cook that. Here again, if you didn't work out in the morning, you'll work out in the evening. It, it's, it's very important to get a good workout sometime during the day just to make sure that you're capable, that you're not sho- that you're not sore, that you're not, all those things. I'm, I'm not trying to get somebody that they're setting their personal goals that day and they've bench pressed X amount, but hey, it's a good time just to get loose and everything and get rid of the stress and everything else like that. Usually somewhere around 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, man, it's time for supper. Hopefully it's a great meal. It's not always, it just depends. And when they're done with that, they're going to clean everything up and then they're going to clean the station. And then sometime by 10 o'clock, maybe they'll be done for the night and they'll go to bed. And if that sounds like a full day, it usually is, but don't forget, we average about three calls a day. So you're going to have to make three calls in there somewhere. And it seems like last night they made three calls. And yeah, I get tired of getting up in the middle of the night too because I hear every one of those calls at my house. My wife gets more tired of it than I do. But that's, that's what, that's the way that it goes. Talk about specific training real quick and then we'll wrap it up. We do training as a shift. We do it as a department and we do it as individuals. The Texas Commission on Fire Protection mandates that we have certain training depending on what your position is. As a fire chief, I can't go out and just do basic SCBA training. I have to do stuff specifically for a fire chief. And the same thing for our captains. But then we also are mandated that as a company, an engine company, we have to do X amount of training, not only during the day, but we have to do X amount of training at night. We have to do X amount of, of training with multiple companies. We can't just have one engine there, we need to have another engine there. We need to work with our mutual aid companies. All these things get piled on there that we, they want us to participate in because they're checking that just like our response times. They want to make sure that we're working with other people. They want to make sure that we're sound. They want to make sure that we know what we're doing. So that's what we typically try to focus on, are all those different areas like that. As far as day-to-day group training, every month, we're going to switch from one thing to a next and it's always basic. One of the things I apologize for was I know a lot of people thought, oh, you're, you're coming from Lewisville. We want to know all these great things and this and that. We train on basic things up there and we train on basic things here. We're going to know how to use our SCBA. We're going to know how to get water out of the end of a hose. We're going to know how to set ladders. We're going to know how to use hand tools. Okay? We're, we're going to do those things here. We're going to make sure that we know what's going on. We're going to talk about water supply. Okay? So I've got a lot more I could talk about, but I know that I need to keep it brief here. But I will answer any questions that I have for you or that you have for me. Yes, sir.
Chief, how many trucks do we have in the bay that are county-owned?
County-owned trucks, you would have Rescue One, you would have three brush trucks, and then you also have a pickup.
But you're doing all the maintenance on them?
Actually, we just started here about two weeks ago as far as putting more accountability on volunteers as far as having them come up and check out their equipment. And part of them checking out that equipment is the fact that they don't need to do it every day. We do it every day. We're making those calls every day. They're not necessarily doing it every day. We'll walk around and see if you've got a flat tire. We'll walk around and see if there's a puddle of, of oil underneath your engine or out of your transmission or anything like that. But for them to have more buy-in, having more accountability in that, having them check out their equipment. Now, we used to check out all their equipment also. We used to take their equipment on a brush fire that we answered for them. A lot of discussion back and forth and, and Rescue One was one of the best examples of that. They don't drive any of our equipment. And if we drive Rescue One out in the county and we're using their equipment and everything like that and they show up, how are they supposed to come to that call? Well, they're going to bring a brush truck. I don't need a brush truck on the side of a road on a mo- on a motor vehicle accident. I need a fire engine and they can bring their rescue truck. So we've really focused on training with the volunteers, driving that, operating the tools that are on that, getting them out there, having the knowledge, having the skills and the ability to, whereas volunteers, they're trained at being able to do that. So we take our equipment to, to our calls, whether it's in the county or not. If we go to a structured fire in the county, it's a house and I want the same thing there that I have here if I'm going to take my guys out there. I want a fire engine with 1,000 gallons of water or 750 gallons of water and all the hose and everything like that. Anything else?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Next item is 5.0, routine matters. 5.1, city manager's operating report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just a few brief items that are included in the memo in your packet. Talk about pretreatment just briefly. We do have an update meeting scheduled for August 26th. Our consulting engineer, Jason Jones, has put together some topics which would include onsite interceptor sizing and effectiveness, O and M costs for the proposed SAF or DAF units and facility requirements, including improvements to our headworks and our solids handling, primarily, I believe, the belt press and the capacity that's required there. I do want to say, you know, it has taken us a couple of years to get to this point, but I still remain optimistic that steady progress is being made and I think both parties are working in good faith to mitigate whatever loading issues that we have on the pretreatment side. BRA agreement, that's an item that we've been discussing oh, for about the past 45, 60 days. The Central Texas Water Supply Corp. will meet tomorrow night and consider a three-party agreement for Central Texas, basically to enter onto our BRA contract as a third party so that they are named to draw, meter, and report on the water that they draw on behalf of Lampasses. This was primarily, you know, we felt it was important, but BRA really felt it was important and in fact, made it a requirement. We have gotten some assurances from the Central Texas Council that it's going to be their recommend, recommendation that Central Texas approved this and we can go ahead and move forward on that regard. And I'll certainly, Mary Keeney has asked that I text her from the meeting as soon as that vote's taken. So we're, we're, we're hopeful and I think everybody has seen the light and certainly BRA has been a strong advocate of this particular three-party agreement. LEDC, just wanted to point, report briefly on a few selected agenda items that they've been taking up. And of course, one of the primary projects that they are undertaking and that you'll have also some action on tonight is the, the development of infrastructure drainage and curb gutter, et cetera, in the north portion of the business park. They will also be taking a look and reviewing some of the things that were basically stopped or put aside in 2017 because we had a particular prospect that didn't, whose, whose land uses didn't quite match up with what we envisioned in terms of the zoning and the covenants at that time. So while that was stopped, it was never picked back up and we certainly have the perfect opportunity now that we are looking at the development of, of that park and the sites. Certainly if you have any other questions, feel free to ask Mandy. She also includes her report in the packet for your, for your convenience. Dolly Parton, this is a really neat program and I think you may have read about it in the, in the newspaper, the dispatch. But the more I kind of looked at this, Shanda talked to us about this in staff meeting and as I kind of jotted a few things down to report to council on, I got online and took a look at it. This, this is a great deal. Kids getting a book in the mail is, I mean, it's like your birthday. It's like a great event. I mean, they'd sit there and wait for these books to come in the mail, you know, once a month up through the age five. We have taken on a big bite of that in terms of being a local champion or affiliate. We have, you know, we've been enrolling kids and that sort of thing. But we're, I think we're certainly very pleased that they're doing that. This program since July of 20, or excuse me, through July of 2021 has gifted over 163 million books to children. And not, Shandis here, do you want to say anything else about that?
That's wonderful. How much are you contributing money-wise to this program? Or maybe I should change the question to who's, who's contributing the money? Do you need donations or?
Well, we had a donation that got us started with this and at the time, our kind of informal goal was 200. We've already surpassed that in just a few days. The gift that was given was expected to last about four to five years. If we keep going at the rate that we're going, it's not going to last that long. So, I mean, the, the general public has the option of donating on the Imagination Library website and you just find the Lampasses page and you can donate directly on there.
Right.
Or you can drop a check by the library, you know, we'll get it to them as well. So, but yeah. So far, 233, a big part of that actually came through Dr. Rasko's Facebook post. We had 145 or something like that sign up the first day after his Facebook post went out, so, and, and email across the district. So we appreciate him a lot.
Wonderful. Thanks.
And those of you that hear me over the years know that, you know, I, I'm always impressed not only by the fact that we have such good circulation at the library, but we don't.
Sure.
The outreach that's done through maybe not only just the library, but a lot of our departments, whether that's public safety, parks and recreation, library, I think that does a tremendous service to the community. So always fun to report on items like that. Eclipse, just to let you know, there will be a meeting August 25th, 10:30 in the courthouse. City and county officials, I believe, along with Chamber and some other interested parties will meet to talk about the eclipse. It'll be April 8th, 2024. I think from a city's standpoint, and certainly we'd be interested in council's thoughts on this, we'll primarily be focused around public safety, traffic, utilities, other items related to entertainment and ancillary events we would probably work with, but defer to some other entities. It, it'll take a group effort to get it all done, but we will be working together and have the first kind of big formal meeting this week. Sales tax, 16.6% better in August of this year than 2020. And then year-to-date, we're about 22% and a half better than we were at this time last year, about $317,000 better. We keep waiting for the sales tax to begin to plateau a little bit and it continues just to have double-digit increases month in, month out. Website, just to report that Monica, her team, and then Mandy will also be work, working on reviewing, preparing content, copy visuals for an on reviewing, preparing content, copy visuals for an upgrade to the city and the LEDC website. They will begin that process, well, actually, they've already started the process, but to work with their folks from Civic Plus November 8th. They'll go through five different phases and probably it'll take about six months to go live. I would like to recognize the following employees that began their career with the City of Lampasses in August. Lupi Sharbening, 14 years. Shirley Elders, 15 years. Sue Rowe, 10 years. Casey Schwartz, 12 years. Erin Weiser, nine, excuse me, eight years. And James Allen, 25 years. Have it answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Finley. Next item is mayor comments. I would just like to take a moment to say thanks to Finley and his staff and council for all the work done on the budget, and appreciate it. It's always a hard process to get through, but we're still all in one piece. Next item, if there are no objections, I'll move forward to 7.5. Discuss and Consider a Proposal from Jones, Heroy &amp; Associates Incorporated for a Continued Review Assessment and Negotiation on the Pretreatment and WWTP Options in an Amount Not to Exceed $12,000.
Mayor, I may need to step down on this.
Sure.
Mayor and City Council, as we've gone through the pretreatment process negotiation, and also looking at particularly some different technologies that have been proposed by the engineering consultants for Ajinomoto Foods North America, it became evident that we would have to engage and we would require Jones, Heroy services to do some additional vetting and additional sizing and et cetera. Our original engagement with Jones, Heroy was for the study that was done concluded towards the end of last year, December, January. And then also, it included a meeting with the Ajinomoto folks. As we've gone to the process of drilling down and vetting, staff had originally provided some latitude to Jones, Heroy for some additional work, whether that be a meeting or two, or to review some of the items that Ajinomoto put forth, to the tune of about $4,000. As we've discussed with Jason, and I'll have him further describe his proposal here in a second, but as we've discussed with him and as the technology has been brought forward, we feel like the not-to-exceed amount of $12,000 makes sense. That would include the subconsultants' cost as well. But Jason, do you want to speak anymore towards your?
I'll speak, goodnight, goodnight. I appreciate that you're up to date. Quick word, bring my...
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Jason? Anyone have questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one abstention. Mr. Clark? Thank you, Jason. We can go back to the original order, 7.1. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Second Reading of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Lampasses Approving the Resolution of the Board Members of the Lampasses Economic Development Corporation Authorizing an Economic Development Project and a Loan in the Amount Not to Exceed $1,500,000. A Sales Tax Remittance Agreement Between the City and the Corporation Resolving Either Matters Incident and Related to the Loan. And the Authority of the Mayor to Execute on behalf of the City a General Certificate of the City and the Sales Tax Remittance Agreement.
Good evening. You may recall, we came in the end of July, the last meeting in July for the first reading of this resolution. We're just seeking approval for second reading of the same resolution that authorizes the EDC to accept a loan in the amount of 1.5 million for an economic development project, which is the phase-one development of the business park.
Recommend approval of the second reading.
We have a motion? Do I need a second?
Need you a second?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
7.2. Discussion and Approval of the Lampasses County Chamber of Commerce and Business Center Agreement for Fiscal Year 21-22.
Thank you, council. I do not have it in front of me, so I'll need to defer to Finley for... I haven't been given it, so. As you recall, the last meeting, we did discuss, I believe, that everything within the agreement is standard for what we discussed last time, except for date changes and the budget amount that was approved of $43,309, $309.20, which is not to exceed that via hot funds for the Chamber of Commerce. And I believe those were the only things that were changed besides the dates.
Right. Do we have a motion?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Second. Are there any questions of Melissa? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
7.3. Discussion and Possible Action Concerning the Proposed Tax Rate Upon All Property Subject to Taxation Within the City of Lampasses, Texas for the 2021 tax year for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Lampasses for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022. Apportioning said levy among the various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are asking for a proposed rate tonight for the tax rate. We are asking that it go to .3370, which is in between the no-new rate and the voter rate.
Could I get a motion?
I would motion to set the new proposed tax rate at .33700 for the city.
A second.
And then we will need a roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you need a second?
Zach did.
Zach seconded.
Okay.
Councilmember Clark? Mayor Prochin Williamson?
Approve.
Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodart?
That's all we need. We've got it approved. The next item, 7.4. Discussion and Possible Action Concerning the Scheduling of One Public Hearing Regarding the Proposed Tax Rate Upon All Property Subject to Taxation Within the City of Lampasses, Texas for the 2021 tax year for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Lampasses for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022. Apportioning said levy among the various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city.
Mayor and Council, since the tax rate is above the no-new rate and below the voter rate, we do have to schedule one public hearing. We have proposed a date for the public hearing on September 7th at 5:30 p.m. on a Tuesday, and there is certain verbiage on the motion.
All right, I need a motion.
I would move to schedule one public hearing on the proposed tax rate using the following verbiage. I move to schedule one public hearing on the proposed tax rate for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at 5:30 p.m., and the meeting to vote on the tax rate for Monday, September 13th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m.
A second.
And does this need a roll call as well? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item is 7.6. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Lampasses, Texas, authorizing the mayor of the City of Lampasses to sign an agreement to contribute funds to relocate, move, and or adjust utilities, and for the cost of acquisition of certain rights-of-way on US 281 South from US 183 to Burnet County line with the Texas Department of Transportation. The project requires a minimum 10% local funding match, and the city has allocated the amount of $39,640.50, thereby 10% local matching funds of the total project estimate of $396,405.
Mayor and Council, this relates to, as the exhibit identifies, the Highway 281 widening project generally from the Burnet County line to EE Onnes, which would include a certain acquisition of right-of-way, mostly on the west side of the thoroughfare, but only a portion of it, I think, just north of the Alfredo's area. And it also takes into account, and I believe, council, some of the council that have been on for a few years have seen the presentations that they've done, but the other item that may take a chunk of this, that they're including in this portion, is taking Naruna, eastbound Naruna at 281 and making a right and a left turn. And if you've ever been caught on Naruna right before school's supposed to start and somebody there is trying to take a left, it just stacks up. And so this would alleviate some of that stacking of traffic. The city's commitment by the agreement is three installments over three different fiscal years, and certainly we don't think the budget impact is going to be certainly within our street department budget.
Any motion?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Anybody have any questions regarding this?
No, but you can handle it within the budget, right?
Yes, sir.
What's the timeframe?
They, the last time that we actually had a sit-down with Tech Dot, they were talking 2023.
And are they still maintaining the right-of-way across the bridge and onto the light there at 281 and Key?
281 and Key, yes, yes.
It'll just be a change-up of the intersection.
Correct. Now, I do believe that eventually they would like to take all that 281 traffic by EE Onnes to 183, and either call that an alternate or some sort of downgraded designation rather than 281.
But this project will change the entrance to the hostess out?
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Finley. Need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.